So I will go ahead with roll call, Hauser.
Yes.
Sarah Geiser.
Here.
Ashley Anderson.
Here.
Judy Downs.
She probably had to go to her other meeting.
Okay. Stacy Anderson.
Yeah.
Mark Smith.
Here.
Sarah Schmitz.
Okay.
Okay.
So the the Assembly Agenda actually had Mick Pearson and Jacobson first, but then we're going to reverse that. And so Gremeyer and Company is going to be our first interview. And so.
We just need to approve the agenda.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Motion for that, yep.
Yeah, may I have a motion?
Smith, so moved.
Anderson, second.
Thanks, guys. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so again, at this point, we will be listening to Trent and Kevin from Gremeyer. And I believe he's in the room. There we go.
You bet. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I will jokingly and in all honesty say we're getting pretty good at these Zoom board meetings. So welcome and thanks for being part of the the meeting tonight and starting your your evening off with us. My name is Dr. Trent Gremeyer. I'll be presenting tonight with the other consultant that will be working in the search if we earn your business. And that's Dr. Kevin Feeney, who is also on the Zoom session tonight. So let me start with giving Kevin a chance to introduce himself briefly here before we share with you what we can offer you in a superintendent search proposal. Kevin?
Sure, I retired after 39 years in education. Two years ago, my latest assignment was I served four years as superintendent of schools at Interstate 35, just south of Des Moines, West Des Moines. And previously, four years of superintendent experience at East Sat County out in west central Iowa. Prior to that, I taught at Workburg College for nine years and then was high school principal at Waverly Shaw Rock. And then a secondary principal at Denver and taught at Denver, so a total of 39 years. And since retirement, I've been working with Trent and have just been thrilled. You know, I was on the other side of the hiring process a number of times. And so seeing Trent's process and what we do, I just believe it to be better. And that comes from my experience in being on both sides of the desk. So it's an honor if we can if we can serve the Urbain Dale School District, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. And as I mentioned, Trent Gremeyer, I also work at Drake University where I advise the superintendent program. And then obviously do this consulting work, working for school boards in hiring superintendents and principals around the state. And Kevin and I actually do the most superintendent searches on our team. We do have a team of six consultants, but I believe Kevin and I do the most of them. Last year, I think we did 10 or 12 together. And so we certainly can probably finish each other's sentences throughout the presentation and beyond. But we're pleased to share tonight what we can offer you on what you know is probably the most important thing a school board does. And that's hiring the superintendent. I need to ask here if I can show share my presentation so I can share with you tonight some some slides. It says it's disabled at this point.
Yeah, let me let me turn that on for you. Just one second.
Not a problem at all. Thank you for that. I sent you a formal proposal, board members, and also a presentation. But I did make a few updates as I was preparing tonight on the presentation. So I want to go ahead and share that with you here as soon as I have access. What we will process tonight is I'll go through what we can offer in a process. I'm going to highlight a few things that you're probably going to hear different that we offer from the other firms that you'll hear from tonight. And then I want to finish with making sure we have time for any questions as well. But please stop me anytime throughout the presentation to ask questions and make sure you understand exactly the steps and the services that we can offer.
It's working now.
It is. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, so again, you have a similar presentation that I shared in our formal proposal, so there won't be any surprises. But I I wanted to elaborate on some of the the things that we can offer and some of the steps in our process. Kevin mentioned we do a lot of searches. This is our sixth year of doing searches. One of the biggest compliments that we have as a firm is when districts rehire us. And that's not a second superintendent hire, that's a principal hire or a director hire when we've helped them on a previous hire. And that's happened 10 times in the last six years. We're pleased about that. We just finished our 62nd hire at PCM, which was our last superintendent hire a couple of weeks ago. And we're very pleased that 97% of our superintendents are still employed six years later. And that beats the national average, which is four years, the traditional tenure of a superintendent nationally. So we're pleased about some of those statistics. You're going to see tonight some of the things that hopefully set us apart from the other firms. I'll just mention these briefly. They were also in my my materials I presented. But we truly believe that we work for you. The first paragraph in the letter I sent you said, I'm sorry, the last paragraph in the letter I said was, you know your district and community better than us. And we acknowledge that. We feel like we know the candidate pools and the process. At least we do it more often than you. And so partnering what you know and what we know is really what leads to a successful hire. And so in the end, we do work for you and defer to you on steps in the process. But we also acknowledge that we don't know the district and community like you do. As Kevin mentioned in his introduction, we stay very current in education trends. Matter of fact, we joke around sometimes with board members about acronyms that candidates throw out. And so we take a lot of pride in staying current in those trends. We all of the things that we do to recruit are all about fit. We don't just always throw out blanket job postings on Indeed and hope the right people apply. But we target people based on fit for Urbain Dale, not just any superintendent position. And part of that is making sure you see and we explain why candidates are a good fit for you. You're going to see tonight some of the screening tools that are unique to our firm and what leads to the 97% of candidates staying in their position and being the national average in our estimation. Once the hire is over, we also help candidates put together an entry plan and set first year goals. And that's part of our partnership with ISFIS, Larry Siegel and Margaret Buckton, that also sit down with the candidates and go through your district finances and student achievement data, and that's no extra cost. And then Kevin and I work with them on their Advanced Insights profile and first year goals. The other thing I want you to know right up front tonight is who you've already met, myself and Kevin. We're not just pitching the process to you and what we offer. We you're also interviewing us tonight as we're interviewing you because we'd be the ones you'd work closely with. We're the cell phones that you would have throughout the search process. So I just want you to know those are some of the things that you'll see further tonight and set us apart. Kevin, anything to add? You're muted, Kevin.
No, let's keep it rolling.
Okay, and I didn't mute you, by the way.
Thanks.
So we're going to just talk through a few of the high points of each step of the process that we would guide. The plan, recruit, screen, hire, and prepare. And so I'm going to hit some of the high points on each of those. And again, if there's questions, certainly let you know, let me know or Kevin know here. But I also want to make sure you understand some of the uniquenesses because as you hear from multiple firms tonight, you're going to hear some very similar things. But perhaps some of the things that are different will help us earn your business. So the first part is really a planning step. And kudos to Steve and you as a board for, you know, potentially being one of the first districts in the state to hire your superintendent next year. That will get you the best candidate pool. It will also ensure a lot of time, depending on what your new leader can give you in transitioning into the new role, succession planning. And so you're really in a great state to shape to plan. In the planning step for us, that would be solidifying a timeline, which you saw in our proposal. The sweet spot is not necessarily quite as early as you might think, but it's between Thanksgiving and Christmas. That's when candidates hopefully have a time to breathe after return to learn. And they have two built-in holiday breaks. You got Thanksgiving break. We see most of our candidates apply on weekends. And then you have Christmas break. So I would tell you whether you hire us or not, the sweet spot for applicants where you have the best pool is between Thanksgiving and Christmas break because they have time to apply. And we'll start looking. The other parts of the planning process that we would help with, and I'll share with some of this with you tonight because we've done some homework already, is narrowing your salary and benefits package as well. And you don't need to lock down to a specific salary, but we want to talk about those things upfront. Because when Kevin and I make phone calls for you and our team, the second question candidates tend to ask is, thank you, I'm humbled by a phone call, but what is the district offering? That tends to be question number two, right after, why do you think I'm a good fit? And we want to be able to share in general what you're offering. The other thing is a stakeholder survey. We would recommend that you get out to your staff as well as the community to see what they're looking for in the next superintendent. And we produce a report in that feedback. We call them desired qualifications that would surface in that survey. And we'd share that with the board, with the board getting the final say in what those top qualifications are that you're looking for. And then solidifying the formal interview process. And what we found is the sooner that you can share dates and qualifications that you're looking for with your stakeholders, the less emails and questions that you might get. So these this is a high level view of things that we would include right away before we even post the job in the planning process. Kevin?
Yeah, going back to the fourth bullet point, identify desired qualifications. You'll see that term multiple times in the presentation. It really is the part that really provides the cohesiveness to the whole process. People get their say in large quantities. Ultimately, the board decides what the desired qualifications are. But then we use that in marketing, whatever those desired qualifications are. Then we also use them in the screening process as we look in reading the various candidates that we have. We ask in the interview process to rate on those desired qualifications. It really is critically important. It's one of the things that I think you'll see is is different between our process and other processes. That is used, though, these things are used all the way through.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. This was the proposed timeline I mentioned, and I already alluded to this. But the sweet spot again in our estimation and based on experience would be between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And then screening perhaps the week of January 11th and hiring the end of January or early February. And that gives you multiple months to transition somebody, allow them to be part of your budgeting for next year, depending on again where they're coming from and how much time they're able to dedicate to your school district. The second part of the process is recruiting. And again, you're going to see a lot of similarities between firms. Obviously, Teach Iowa is kind of the go-to for another year in Iowa until they they go to a different statewide posting board. But we have a great relationship with obviously Drake and the other superintendent programs. Not that you're looking for a rookie that's just finishing, but their alumni networks and some of the cold leads that we get from some of their faculty. We do post on a lot of national posting boards. That's K-12 Job Spot, Indeed. We don't want to miss somebody there, as well as Teachers Teachers. And then the other more pointed national posting board that we would we would post, the Urbain Dale Superintendent Position, would be the AASA, and that's the Association of School Administrators. They have a job bulletin and we have a nice partnership with them. So we post there as well as our website and the pools that we have. We do during the search season have about 2,300 hits per week on the website. We're also one of the only firms to post and promote the job on social media, including Facebook, Twitter, and LinkedIn. But what we're probably most proud of is some of the cold leads that take a phone call, a text, or an email for somebody that's maybe not looking for a job, especially in, you know, November or early December. And so we take a lot of pride in reaching out to candidates that that may be interested or have told us they're interested, but they're not actively looking. Now, we know if we earn your business that, you know, it's our job to sell the district to candidates. And so we've done a little homework already and with Larry and Margaret. And a couple of the finances we looked at that you should be proud of. Your open enrollment numbers are certainly trending positive, which is something we can sell to folks. And your solvency ratio is very good as well. Lot of other positive numbers, but those were two that struck me that, again, we could sell to candidates very, very easily, as well as a steady enrollment. So doing some of our homework already, as well as some of the salary and benefits. You can see Urbain Dale there, right in the middle of the conference is probably just above average when it comes to superintendent salaries. I have some more data I would show you if we earned your business. But I just want you to know that because of the partnerships that we have, we would represent and be able to sell the district to potential candidates. Kevin, anything to add on the recruiting step? Okay. Board members, any question in the planning or recruiting step before I go on to step three here in the screening process? Okay, based on body language, I'll keep going here. Step three is the screening process. And there's really a three in red there. There's kind of three parts of the screening that we would facilitate. And the first part is a pre-screening, and that's normally a closed session if the candidates request it. And that is where Kevin and I bring you all the candidates, as well as their licensure checks, their social media checks, their background checks, and their reference summaries. Now, you've already seen through our process every candidate that's applied. And so you normally folks have those saved electronically. They have notes, they have folders, just whatever works for you. But throughout our process, through Mary Beth or Dina, we would send new applicants every week and to the board. And so every time, every week, when a candidate hits submit, you would see those applicants through the the six or seven week posting. Then we we schedule the closed session pre-screening review. So you've seen their materials. Now we're kind of bringing you the Paul Harvey, if you will, the rest of the story about the candidates. Again, summaries, references, background checks, social media licensure is all part of that. And I'll show you how that looks here in a minute. Then you we would go through that. That's normally a good two-hour session, depending on the number of candidates. And if we have general consensus from the board, then we move a candidate forward for the next phase of the screening process, which are the initial interviews. And that, since COVID, has taken place via Zoom, but it was always electronic. It's live like this. They're not recorded, which is a difference between us and some of the other firms. But we use Zoom to interview for a half hour, is what we recommend. Five to eight candidates that have made it through the pre-screening review. So the initial interviews or screening would be the second phase of the screening. And then the board would normally hire three finalists to be brought back as finalists. Their names are public, and they're brought back to interview with multiple stakeholders that we help the board select and identify and communicate with when we get down to that personal session. So we do help set questions, but we take feedback from everybody you want invited. Send them a survey to get the questions that they want, and we help organize the interview questions in groups. We help develop the interview schedule that's conducive to how you want the day to look. And then the other part that you can't minimize is making sure that those those candidates, semifinalists and finalists, are really sure that they want to move forward in the process. And that's not often the candidate. It's more often their family. Is their family committed to move? Is their spouse content to look at a new job opportunity? And so that's some of the stuff that we hang our hat on behind the scenes. Next, you're going to see, I mentioned this earlier, but this is the what we would bring you in closed session on every candidate. This is just a mock-up, but this is would be a summary of, you can see in gray here, licensure. You can see in the blue here a name, current role, current salary, and this is Kevin and I's rating. So once you tell us these are the top things we're looking for, we're going to go through every one of the candidates in your pool and rate them top-down and present them that way to you. Now, if there's any potential negatives about a candidate, you're going to see them down here in gray. And so we bring those to your attention as well. And sometimes we deduct points from them back to the top here. And again, that's how we present the candidates. You don't have to go with our top candidates, but we're trying to be objective in screening candidates for you and in how we present them to you with lots of information on a page about each candidate. And we have, we usually dedicate about one page to every single candidate that applies. You will see every candidate, their materials, as well as we call them our rating summaries. The initial screening interviews, when you move five to eight candidates forward, look like this. This is actually a screenshot of a board screening candidate. So again, electronic, we spend a half hour and we help you script the questions to ask them. Our recommendation is you have the candidates have about half the questions. So maybe four or five questions in advance and four questions impromptu. And that's a good mix between seeing how the candidates are prepared, as well as how they think on their feet. So this is just a picture of how those screening interviews would look with your semifinalists. Kevin, anything to add on screening?
No, it works real slick. And going back to when Trent was talking about, you know, we will give you a rating, you know, the one-page thing that kind of is a snapshot of everything that that we know about this candidate. And then we'll rate them, but ultimately, it's your decision. We give you based on what the objective criteria is and the desired qualifications. That's how we rate them. Ultimately, it's your your decision. And very seldom does a board go with, you know, our one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, based on the criteria. So just just know that, please.
You bet. This is just a quick slide to let you know again that you're going to see every candidate more than once and that we really believe that the process should get more personal as the candidates move forward. And so that's why, again, screening live as in the screening process and then candidates there in person. It's just a screenshot of how we, the nine questions for screening. And again, if you see the parentheses there, those desired qualifications, that's our, we don't tell the candidates what those are. But that's our attempt to say, board, what's the best question that's going to get at how visible they'd be in your community and help you script the right questions when you have a half hour or so to get to know those candidates better. And they're telling. Those interviews are very telling. Now, here's where you're going to get into some of the differences. I'm confident from some of the other firms. And you'll you'll probably scratch your head on this one and say, this is just maybe bizarre, but I'm telling you, this really works. We recommend when it gets down to formal interviews that you have mixed interview teams with every group instead of except the board. And what what that means is that you can have all the teachers you want involved, all the community members, students, support staff. You decide on the people you want involved, but you actually mix those teams up. And so a principal has to have a perspective from a community member. And a teacher has to get a perspective on perhaps a student question. The other thing it does is it sets the board up for success. And that no group in a traditional process, the teacher's interview, the administrator's interview, the board interviews, and they may leave thinking, this is our candidate, the board better go with our top choice. And it sets the board up for for failure in some regards and the candidate often in a tough spot if they if they know that one group maybe wasn't as highly for them. And so when you mix those teams, it produces a more efficient interview day. It produces more understanding for the interview teams. It sets the board up for success. And we have seen that the candidates, it's a more credible interview because the candidates cannot tailor an answer. I'm not going to say they lie at all, but they can't tailor an answer to what just the teachers want to hear or the support staff want to hear or the students or community. They have to actually answer honestly because it's a mixed group. And so we prep them on that because it's not a typical homogeneous interview group. It's really a mixed mixed group. And if you as a board say, we don't like that, that's fine. But we really have seen benefits to these mixed formal interview teams. So this is did a little legwork already and sharing with you the candidate feedback form. So after the formal interviews, we would facilitate and set this up for you where everybody had an electronic device. And if you clicked on this hyperlink up here, they would see all the candidates' application materials. So they don't have to be printed unless we need to. They would do this, go to this dropdown, click on it, and they would see your three finalists. And then they would provide you feedback as a board by clicking and saying, I'm a teacher or I'm a support staff. And then based on your desired qualifications, we would be asking everybody that interviewed those candidates on that formal interview day, how did they rate back to what the board said months ago were the most important desired qualifications? Notice that we're not asking who should the board should hire or rank them. We're saying, how do they fit what the board said was most important? And then we're giving them an opportunity to say, based on this candidate's strengths, tell the board what you want them to know, based what what weaknesses or concerns do you have about this candidate? And what else do you want the board to know? Then at the end of that day, with everybody that's involved providing feedback, we produce a report that looks something like this, where we go into every group and say, what were the themes then for the teacher group? What did they say were the strengths and concerns about this candidate? Jeff, what did they say the strengths and concerns were about Kelly? And then those ratings, they don't see this, the interview teams don't see this. Those ratings show up in a graph like this, and sometimes it's beautiful, like at PCM, where every single group had one candidate, and they didn't know it, but the board saw it. They had rated them all individually, one person higher, and the board agreed. And we had somebody hired in about two and a half hours. And sometimes it's not quite that clear, but you will know from every single different group, how did they rate these candidates back to what we said we wanted? And we'll produce this synthesized report. Kevin? Anything?
Yeah, no, it just, it's just really important because the mixed interview teams, going back to that. I, when I first heard that from Trent, I said, you're crazier to bedbug. And then I've seen it in operation. And I just regret, actually, as an administrator, that I didn't use that actually when we had opportunities to hire for the reasons that Trent talked about. But the beauty of the process is that you'll get composite feedback from your formal interview, but it'll also be broken down by each individual group. And again, they don't see that data. You do. And which, again, PCM is very clear, other places, it's going to take a little bit more give and take. But you know exactly which each group is telling you, and that's that's very useful to a board.
The other thing that's unique to our process, it's no extra cost or anything. It's built in because we believe in it. It's called an Advanced Insights Profile with the partner, the results group in West Des Moines. What we do in the candidates apply for your job, we have them take an EEOC compliant inventory. It's called the Advanced Insights, and it measures three things. Their observable behaviors through the DISC measurement, their dimensions, and then what they call, or their values, and then their dimensions, like social pragmatic thinking, systems, judgment, empathy, things like that. So and they take it when they apply, not necessarily just your finalists. So when we get down to your finalists, we share these reports with you to give you validity, really, to what you saw and heard throughout the screening and formal interviews about how they present and what their blind spots might be and what their strengths might be in this inventory. And we found that this really helps confirm for a board in who they're getting, what they're getting, and how they presented themselves, as well as if you read the summary pages based on the candidate you hire, really strongly believe you get off to a better start with that potential candidate, understanding their blind spots and how best to communicate with them. So again, this is something we offer and some more data in the process. Now, when it gets down to hiring, again, you've seen some of our tools, but we also help take care of negotiations. There won't be any surprises with background checks and then the announcements. We help put those together, you approve those, and then they're ready to be unified and shared out to the community. Another thing that's unique in our process, this past year, we were able to solidify and land, and I'm very pleased about this, 100% of our principal and superintendent hires and athletic directors, actually. And I blame that or credit that to this document. When you get down to your three finalists, and we've shared with them, here's the salary range, here's the benefits, here's what they're looking for. We asked them before they interview that formal day, notice at the bottom, we say, what's your family commitment? And if it's below a nine, we have conversations about that. Sometimes it's a spouse worried about a job, and so then we cater to them during the formal interviews. And then we say, okay, if you get the offer, what is it going to take in salary and benefits? And if it's out of line, we talk about that up front. And so, you know, again, this past year, based on knowing what the candidates are going to need to accept the job, doesn't mean they're going to get it, but at least we know. So when you decide what candidate you want to hire, we we bring this out. We usually meet in the middle or if it's reasonable, offer what they're asking for. And again, every time this past year, we were able to get the candidate that the board wanted. Again, I credit a lot of it to knowing what they need in salary and benefits. Preparation, when we're we're we got the hire formally announced and approved, we do take the feedback and share advice from the survey with your your new hire. We help set priorities for the superintendent and goals. We go through their Advanced Insights profile and help them set a formal entry plan as well. And again, you have a real advantage because they could be hired in late January, February. So we'll have some extra time to do that. Again, I think our ISFIS partnership is valuable for both recruiting and preparing your your candidate, getting connected with great resources in the field. To give you some peace of mind, this was the 14 that we hired previous year. Right now, our past client, six months after they're hired, we have 100% satisfaction from the board presidents that we've worked with in the past. And so we're pleased about that. As I bring things to a close here, so I respect your time. Our proposed cost there is, this is another difference from from what you'll hear from others. I'm confident our price is probably a little higher than you've heard from some of the other firms, but it's also guaranteed. With everything you saw tonight, it won't be a dollar more than what's proposed. 7% of your outgoing superintendent's salary, trips to the district. And how we do business is we give you the full process with everything included with a guarantee that that's the cost and nothing more. Sometimes less when we can save money on travel and things like that. So that's just how we do business. So that's just how we do business. I'm going to leave this on the screen and just reiterate some of the things that we shared tonight. But we believe, or would say that we believe we're the right fit. If you connect with Kevin and I as consultants, because it is a partnership. If you really want objective data, I'm confident that you're not going to find a firm that can provide more data to you as a board to make the right decision for the district and community. If you see some of our screening processes, mixed interview teams, EEOC compliant, advanced insights profile, some of those things, that's unique, nobody else is going to be able to offer that to you. The survey, the finances, we've looked at some of those things. I want you to see, we've already started to do our homework on getting to know and be able to sell Urbandale. And then that partnership with ISFIS results group, that's a partnership above and beyond what we can just offer that will benefit your candidate. And the guaranteed pricing structure is something we hang our hat on. So again, I'm confident you'll hear from firms that are going to be cheaper upfront, not necessarily cheaper in the end. And if you don't get the right person, I guarantee it's not cheaper. So with that being said, Kevin and I would love to get the chance to really meet you in person, number one. And number two, I want you to know, we put our name behind our process and work hard to make sure that Urbandale gets a great superintendent. What questions do you have for us?
Trent, thank you so much for your presentation. I greatly appreciated it. It looks like you have quite a bit of objective data, which is very important. Recently, the board went through a workshop with the former superintendent of Waki, Ronnie Stocker. And it became clear through the workshop that the board is looking for a very certain personality type. And I'm wondering how you help us quantify subjective qualities.
Yeah, that advanced insights tool. Without a doubt, matter of fact, I don't want to, I want to respect your time, so I'd love to talk more about this. But when we see a lot of turnover in candidates sometimes, that's usually an issue, right? It's not the hard skills or the technical skills, it's the personal and the soft skills. And so what we can use, what we've done sometimes is we'll go in and we'll survey people in Urbandale that have been successful, say for 10 years and say, what are they doing to be successful? Then we'll match that profile to the candidates and they don't know it. But then we're saying, okay, those, what are the soft skills that make these people in the district successful? And then we match that objectively and scientifically with what you're looking for. And I don't know what that is, but I'm confident that inventory would help us identify those soft skills.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it most definitely would. I, I've used the profiles as a superintendent in hiring all professional staff. Exactly as what you're talking about, we would set out, this is what we're looking for. And then we would use that to help ensure that that's what we found and man, I'm a believer.
Well, not to go on, but we had a candidate from Southwest Iowa. They were, they were losing their superintendent that they actually really loved. And throughout the process, they said, we want to find somebody like this gentleman. And so we had that gentleman take the profile. And then we didn't use it necessarily to screen, we used it towards the end. And we didn't use the profile to select their new superintendent. But I kid you not, Kevin and I were just talking about this today. The candidate that they chose in the end, their profiles were darn near a perfect match. It was, it was very interesting.
Yep.
Other questions?
I'll ask one more quickly. I see you have a great satisfaction rate, that's amazing. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. I believe you said it was for the last year. I recognize you may not have this at the top of your head, but if we were to go back and look a year past before, prior to that, what would that look like?
Carmen, are you asking about how many we've, we've been able to hire the board's choice? Or how many are in their current position?
The satisfaction, where you had 14 respondents saying they were 100% satisfied with your service. If we were to look, you said it was for the last six months or the last year. If we were to look at it over the past maybe two years, what would that say to us?
Well, I actually didn't start doing that survey to the, I didn't start adding that question to the board, to be brutally honest with you, till this past year. So we have two years worth of data. But I'm confident based on the references that I can share with you, it'd be very, very positive. And again, I think that's a credit to the 10 districts that have rehired us as well. But I implore you to call any reference of any firm or board that we've worked for. And I think you hear positives about what we've shared. I, not to deviate from that question, but I can give you some other quick stats that we tend to hire. Based on the data, 10% out of state hires, about 29% female candidates. That to, that I can just rattle off right off the top of my head. And so, yeah, just being honest with you in the data I have and data I don't, but I'm confident the boards we've worked for are happy with our process and the candidate in the end.
That's a fair answer, thank you so much.
Well, I will, unless there's any other questions, I just want to respect, I know you guys have a, have a longer night tonight with, here in different firms. I hope we were communicated clearly some of the uniqueness and things that we feel we can offer that are better than some of the other firms. And just reiterate, if you have any questions after our presentation tonight, to reach out and that if we earn your business, we really look forward to working with you and meeting you in person.
Okay, thank you guys.
It would, it would be an honor.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. And Mary Beth, are we just to leave now?
Yes, you can leave, thank you.
Thank you guys, have a great evening.
Yep.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Or Dina, can you send the Zoom code to Sarah? Trying to get it off her phone, please.
Yeah, let me send it to her now.
Thank you. Okay. So our next firm is going to be McPherson Jacobson. And I don't have the names of our presenters right in front of me, so hopefully they'll be able to introduce themselves. Are they, are they waiting or are they not going to be here till 7:30?
They may not be here until 7:30. The presenters that I have listed are Mr. Lyle Schwartz and Mrs. Kimberly Antisdell.
Uh huh, yeah.
Currently, no one is in the waiting room, so.
I don't know if we'll have the opportunity to actually talk about pluses and minuses between each one. So I don't know for sure if I want to get that started. Any response from people? We have, we have added, you probably haven't had a chance because you guys are working, but we have added an item for a possible action of selection of one of these firms for the next board meeting on Wednesday night. So you don't need to feel compelled to make a decision tonight necessarily, but I'm hoping that you are able to kind of begin thinking about the pluses and minuses between each of these. And maybe go back and review what we came down to with Ronnie about things that we were kind of looking for in a firm and obviously in a superintendent. You don't want to get out ahead of it, but finding the best fit. I don't know if any of you did review that, but I would suggest you might want to if we don't reach a decision tonight. So I think we'll probably just wait. Does that make sense, Mary Beth?
Yes, I am going to send an email just in the chance that they would see it, that they could come on when they're ready.
But currently, we're only slated till 7:30, is that our next one?
Correct.
Okay.
And the next one is scheduled at 8:15, the last one. We were hoping that we'd get out a little bit ahead of it, but. So as you know, McPherson and Jacobson are out of Omaha. And I would suggest if you haven't had a chance to look through Symbly, and you can actually review all of these presentations and the material that they sent, if you haven't had a chance to do that yet.
Mary Beth, I have Mr. Schwartz and Mrs. Antisdell's phone numbers. Would it be helpful if I just tried to give them a quick call?
That would probably be better, Dina, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no worries. I'll, I'll keep looking at the participants too, just in case anyone pops on. And I sent Sarah an email just now.
Okay.
So hopefully she'll get that one too.
I'll tell you, I'll send a text to you.
Okay, thanks.
And do we have the contact then for the last firm too, to see if they might be able to, if we finish with this one? You know, if we're able to.
They're already scheduled at 8:15, but yeah, we probably should be able to move it up, I would think.
Yeah, I could have Dina go ahead and call them, or I could send an email as well.
Sure, that'd be great.
We just didn't want them to overlap. And some of their material is obviously proprietary. So that's why the documents are locked. I'm going to tell Dick Christie that we might be ready by eight o'clock.
Yeah, if that's reasonable.
Catherine, maybe you want to review just a brief timeline or what you might know of a timeline for the board while we've got this little bit of lull? Or maybe it coincides with what the presenter already said.
Well, I did notice when I read them back over today, some of the. Okay, Sarah, put her down, she's in now.
Thank you.
The timelines are a little bit different between these companies. They're closed and, but some of them, like this one, probably wouldn't really be fully done until January. I think we'll see with Ray and Associates, they appear to be ready to go right now and would be done by the end of November. And it seems to me with McPherson, we'll probably uncover this, but they were looking more at December. To have the process actually be done. The plus for us is that we are quite early in the, in the search process because we've known, you know, since June that we were going to have this opening. And so we probably get pretty good service from our search firm because there's probably not very many going on. So that's an advantage that we knew going in when Steve resigned early, that we would be able to get a step forward on this process. And I, I think, I think it's just a big plus. The, the plus of getting it all set up and getting on the ground early is, you know, we've talked about at one point, you know, some health transitioning or being able to work somehow with whoever the new person is to really solidify, so they don't have to walk in in June or July of next year and not have any familiarity with the district or the position, except to know they've got it. So that will be a factor that we probably want to take into account is what do we feel is reasonable and what would we like to see as far as timelines? I don't know, other variables. Having participated in some of these during the times in the districts that I was involved in, I do, I do think we need to nail down what the participation is as far as stakeholder surveys and how to incorporate those, but still maintain quite clearly that, as I put out in that email, that the final decision is the board's. And we make that clear from the beginning, we take into account their feedback, but have people clearly understand that we're taking into account what they think and what they'd like. But ultimately, we are taking this responsibility as is legally our responsibility. There probably are some variables when I look at it a little bit on the travel costs and lodging and that kind of thing that might be different on the prices between the organizations. The first two are close to 14,000. Ray and Associates is like 11.5 with possibly some travel costs involved. I don't know what that would do if we did almost everything remotely. And I don't know how prepared, most of them said they were kind of prepared to do that. But that's probably a legitimate question going forward. I mean, these guys, Grendmeyer kind of covered that they, you know, how they had tried to accommodate this. But we are in a new era and how do we compensate for lack of face to face? If it comes down to that, I think is a reasonable concern. Anyone else have anything that occurs to them that might, we might need to be thinking about or asking?
Well, Catherine, once we have our, our final selection of our top maybe three to five candidates, would it be something where we could hold a meeting the way we did with Ronnie? We social distance, we wear our face masks, we don't allow the public into the room, although they'll be able to hear everything. Do you think anything like that would be conducive to, because we do lose something over Zoom. I think face to face interaction is much more powerful.
I think the variables there are what's the condition of the virus spread in Pope County? And also what's the willingness of each person on the board? I completely agree, even with masks, it's better to see people. And so that's something we're going to have to weigh the risks of and decide whether we're willing to do that and accommodate it for people who aren't prepared to do that.
Wanted to let you, we all know that the McPherson team is ready to. Be admitted.
Yep. Okay, go ahead. Should I be able to see him?
Yes. Yep, it looks like it's still just loading.
Yep.
Thank you for attending early for, to accommodate us. And we're not able to hear you, I'm not sure, Dina, if you're able to unmute him?
Who's that?
There's one.
Hello there. Can you hear me? This is Kim. Okay, good. Meanwhile, if you can both hear, I'm Catherine Houser, I'm the president of the board. I'm introducing you, the McPherson firm from Omaha. And you can introduce each other. And I'm going to mute myself and take myself off the screen now. Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Catherine, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. You know, is everybody on that needs to be on?
Yes. We can, you, I'm just going to turn off, I'm going to mute mine.
Before you do that, if you would take a, just a minute for each of the board members to introduce themselves, how long they've been on the board and what they do in real life besides being a full-time board member.
Why don't I list their names and let them tell about themselves? And I'm very fast, yes. So Brianna, Sarah Geiser.
Hi, my name is Brianna Sarah Geiser and I'm a newer board member. I was elected last fall. And I work for Heartland Area Education Agency. So I've been in education for over 25 years.
All right, thank you.
Stacy Anderson.
Hi there, my name is Stacy Anderson. I'm aware it says Carmen, but that is the hazards of letting your children borrow your laptop. of letting your children borrow your laptop. In my personal life, I work as a paralegal at a law firm. Currently, my top three specialties would be civil rights, class action, and personal injury. And I've been on the board for three years now.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine Hauser.
Hi, I am retired, retired from the Urban Development. I worked there for 21 years. And before that, I was in Council of Love at Abraham Lincoln, which you probably recognize. And before that, I was at the Scott. Before that, I was at the Ella. I have been on the board. This is my fifth year. It's my second term. This is my second term as president. That's probably it.
Judy Downs.
Say it again.
You may not have heard me. Judy Downs.
I don't think Judy's been on since the beginning.
She logs in, but she's really at her Polk County Democrats meeting. She's not here.
Okay, Ashley Anderson.
I don't know if my mic's working any better yet. Hi, I'm Ashley. I've been on the board since November, same with Brianna. I'm very lucky enough to be a stay-at-home mom as of right now. Thank you.
We're all stay-at-home moms right now, aren't we?
Next, we have Sarah Schmitz.
Hi, I am in my third term, or third term. Third year with the school board and in my, I am a social worker for, in another school district in my real job. And that's all.
Thank you.
Our last board member is Mark Smith.
Hi, my name is Mark Smith. In my third year, similar to Sarah. In my work life, I am COO and general counsel of an ag finance company based out of West Des Moines.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to have my team introduce themselves, and then I will start and try to keep this concise so there's enough time for questions that you have. I would like to start with Dr. Richard Sunblad, if he can introduce himself. Dick, I know you're on. I saw you. Is your mic muted?
Okay, I thought, no, it's not. Thank you.
There you go.
Dick Sunblad. Been with McPherson and Jacobson since 2007 and completed a pretty significant number of searches. Prior to that, I was the superintendent in Johnston for 16 years, from 1990 to 2006. And before that, I was at Bettendorf as the high school principal from '84 to 1990, after completing my doctorate at Iowa. I was a math teacher in the classroom for 13 years, enjoyed that immensely. But I've enjoyed also helping districts find the right person for their superintendent position. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Lyle Schwartz, if you'll introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you for having us tonight. Lyle Schwartz, I'm a retired superintendent, 15 years as a superintendent here in Iowa. 16 years as a principal, which was both in Iowa and Alaska. St. Elstom Village is in Alaska for 10 years. But the last, well, starting my fourth year with McPherson and Jacobson, been doing several searches the last few years. Originally from Iowa, even though I worked in Alaska and a southwest Iowa boy. And I've really enjoyed working with McPherson and Jacobson and the districts that we've been fortunate enough to work with to help place superintendents over the last three years, starting with my fourth now. I also, I was also a teacher prior to becoming a principal.
All right, thank you. And Kim Anderson.
Hi, I'm Kim Antistel, and I have been working with McPherson and Jacobson since 2018. I am a southwest Iowa girl. All of my work was done mostly in southwest Iowa. I was a high school principal. Then after moving to Grimes, I did interim work for Johnston and Ankeny and have worked with the DE on some SEL work, social emotional learning work. And I have enjoyed being with McPherson and Jacobson the last couple of years and look forward to doing some more searches with them.
My name's Tom Jacobson. I'm the CEO and owner of McPherson and Jacobson. My background is 16 years as a superintendent in Minnesota and Colorado. And for the past 29 years, I've been a professor at the University of Nebraska and in educational administration. And my background, my expertise is human resource management, which is what this business is. So I have the ability to say to my students, I teach what I do and I do what I teach. And this business has helped me, helped me stay involved in public education, being involved in day-to-day decisions of that. I'm going to be working from this proposal which you have received or referring to as we go through. So if you have that, I would appreciate it. McPherson and Jacobson was formed in 1991. We're entering our 30th year. We've done over 850 searches across the United States and 38 searches. We are a leading national firm. We've done over 90 searches in Iowa and have been very active there. We have a team of, I think, 16 consultants in the state, or excuse me, 10 consultants in the state. We have 130 consultants across the United States, but 10 in Iowa. And our business model is, even though we're a national firm, that we have local individuals that understand your state and your rules and your regulations and making sure that we're in tune with them. And also with the recruiting piece to help us do that, bring that about. Some things I want to state before I get into our five phases. First of all, we don't hire superintendents. That's not what we're about. What we do is we have a decision-making model that we take you through as a board, and we want you to own this process. We want this process to be yours, and we adapt it to your needs to do that. Now, we have a protocol that we've developed over the past 30 years, and we're going to advise you through that. But we want to make sure that this is your search, not our search, and we're there to guide you through it. When we first decided to become a national firm back in 1994, we said, what would set us apart from the other national search firms? We find our hand on transparency. We believe in a very transparent process. We've designed a protocol that allows your stakeholders to have meaningful input into your decision while keeping you complete control of that decision. And I'll talk about that as I go through our five phases. But we believe that the public business should be done in public, that they should have input into this very important decision that you select officials have to do. We are recruiters of talent. We don't have, we don't have a stable candidate. If that doesn't happen. But we do track the careers of successful superintendents. And what we do is, once we find out from you what your highest priorities are for what you're looking for in your superintendent, we're going to go out and recruit individuals that we think would be a good match. Some of our best candidates are not looking for a job. They're happy where they are. They're doing a good job. But we're going to reach out to them and try to convince them why this is a great opportunity and have them to apply for, to do that. So that recruiting part is an integral part of working with our firm. In our literature, it says, it's about the kids. We really believe that. Everybody that works for McPherson and Jacobson has been or is involved in public education. Either as an administrator or as a board member. But everybody that works for us has been or is involved in public education, and that's our commitment to bringing back to this wonderful community things that we can do. I want to talk about our retention rate because I'm very proud of that. According to the National School Board Association and the Council of Grender City Schools, the average tenure for superintendent is between 3.2 and 4.2 years. In the past five years, our retention rate has been almost 80%. In the past 10 years, we've been over 50%. And for the past 15 years, we've been almost 50% in our retention rate. What we want to do is find out what you, your community needs and go out and find individuals that have that skillset and bring them in front of you as a board so that you can decide what you want to do. Our goal, and when we bring the finalists to you, is to have you have a tough decision saying, and I've had these phone calls before, while it's time, any one of these people would be great. And I'm glad for what you brought to us, and that's what we want to do. And the reason for that, as I told you, I'm a professor at the university, so I get into the research. According to Marizona Waters, their research shows that sustainability of leadership increases student achievement. And so that's why we're so focused on finding the right fit and have that person come and stay with you. The investment for our search is $11,500. I can talk about expenses at the end, but I'm going to turn to page seven. If you've got this, if you have this proposal, that's, I'm going to quickly walk through our five phases to do that. The very first thing we're going to do prior to this, work with you as a board to have you identify your top four, five, six selection criteria. What are the skillsets you want your new superintendent to have and be proficient in? That's important to us because it drives our recruitment piece as we go out and reach out these individuals and talk to them. As I said, we do track the careers of quality people. They all have different, they all have different skillsets. We're going to be looking for people that have the skillsets that you're looking for and encouraging them to apply. At our first meeting, we're going to work with you on your timeline and your goal of when you want to hire, and then we're going to backload a calendar to do that. We want to make sure you're comfortable and that you have enough time to make sure that you can digest the information we're going to be bringing to you. We don't want to rush the situation. Want to make sure that you've got all the time that you need to do it. Also, at the first meeting, what we're going to be doing is saying, who are the stakeholders you want us to meet with? And I'm going to say that since March, we've been doing 95% of our searches virtual, but we're still able to accommodate our stakeholder input via Zoom and other ways to do it. We do have boards that want us to come out and meet with groups. If that's the case, we'll do that. Depending on if your community is comfortable with that and if our consultants are comfortable with that. But we're able to reach out to them. So we'll have you identify the groups you want us to meet with. The typical internal groups are your teachers, your students, and your students are the most important stakeholders you have. Your classified staff, your principals, your central office staff. And then we're going to ask you, in your community, what other unique groups do you want us to meet with? And we have met with ministerial alliances, business groups, Jacobson's, the Congress. We're going to ask that you have at least two or three just community forums that we can meet with. And again, we can do that electronically, but we're going to ask you as board members to give us names of individuals. And we're also going to reach out and send invites to your community that here's an opportunity to provide input into the process and give input to you as a board member. We will be working on compensation parameters. What we will do as our team, we will take a look at like-sized districts and those that have recently filled and bring you information about what they're paying. We don't care what you pay your superintendent. Our fee's not based on that. But we want you to be competitive. We don't want you to lose somebody over $1,000. But we don't want you to pay one dime more than you have to. So we'll be talking to you about, let's take the, let's take the contract. Being a former superintendent, over my 60 years, I've built a lot of things into my contract. And what we're going to suggest to you is, let's strip out those extras. Offer a competitive salary, and when your new superintendent comes in, is successful, they're going to be able to negotiate things in later on. But let's start with just a basic contract to do that. So we're going to do that work for you because we do that. We're a turnkey operation. We do everything for you except interview candidates. But we do need a point of contact in your district. And that point of contact's basic responsibility is to schedule the consultants' meetings and work as a liaison with your community to make sure that we've got those meetings going on. But we receive and send out all the information to applicants. We don't rely on your staff to do that. We have a staff here in Omaha, Nebraska, and they are very efficient and they're able to handle that information. In phase two, we'll be meeting with your stakeholder groups that you've identified for us. And when we meet with them, whether virtually or in person, there's four questions that we have them. The first two are, tell us your good things about your community and tell us your good things about your school district. Those questions are designed to help us recruit candidates because this is a two-way decision-making process, and we're selling you as much to the candidates as they're selecting to apply. So it's important for us to know what you have to offer them to do that. The third question we have for your stakeholder that we can share with the candidates. Every school district has issues. Might be increasing enrollment, declining enrollment, financial issues, facility issues, whatever they are. We're going to share those with the candidates so they know what they're going to be coming into. Then the final question we ask the stakeholder groups is, based on that, what skillsets do you think this person should have to be successful here? If you could talk to that new superintendent coming in, what would you want them to know and how could you help them prepare to be successful here? Everything that we hear, everything that we break down, everything that we get is presented to you in a report. There's going to be a detailed report, and then there's going to be an executive summary that talks about the reoccurring themes that we heard from all the groups. And oh, by the way, we also do this electronically in multiple languages. So if you have minority groups that need to have a multiple language, we take care of that. We're able to reach out to them, and we gather all that information, put it into a booklet that you will receive and we'll be presenting to you. We take care of announcing the vacancy. We'll talk to you about the advertisement. Included in our price, we send it out to all state school board associations, all state administrator associations. We will be recommending for districts your size that you also include the American Association of School Administrators and the National School Board Association. We'll prepare announcements and put out that. I know that you're one of the larger districts in Iowa. And we have done a numerous amount of urban districts across the United States, from Clark County, which is Las Vegas, with $310,000, to Jefferson County in Kentucky, to Orange County in Florida. So we have, we have a lot of experience with urban districts, and I know that you are an urban district. Lost my place here. We will be posting out, we don't, we don't represent candidates, but we do have a website where they can apply to us to get announcements. And we have about 3,500 individuals that have posted on our website. And when we get an opening, we put it on there and send them an email. Because we reach out, we reach out electronically to a number of our consultants. We have LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter. I don't know if any of those things work, but I do have a person here in the office that does work that for me. We are recruiters of talent, and that's what I want to point out next, is that once you tell us what you're looking for, we're going to be actively reaching out to individuals who we think will be a good match. And as I said previously, some of our best applicants are looking for work. But we're going to be reaching out to them and trying to convince them to apply. And that's a big thing about hiring a national recruiter, is our network and our ability to talk to people and meet with them. We're at the AASA National Conference, NSBA National Conference, with the High School Board Association Conference, and we're networking all the time. So our ability to recruit, get quality individuals to apply for you. Now, we believe in an open process. But what we say to our applicants is, unless you're a finalist, your name's not going to be, become public information. So we do have confidentiality, especially for our recruits to do that. But they understand that if you select them as a finalist, that their names will become public information. And we believe, and being a former superintendent, I believe this too. And we believe, and being a former superintendent, I believe this too, there shouldn't be a time when, if you're selected as a finalist, to stand up and say, yes, I'm a finalist for Urbandale School District, and I'm proud to be one to do that. So what goes that aren't selected, their names do not become public information. We keep all the individuals informed of their status. Again, another person in my office is working with them all the time. It's an electronic application process that they send in to us, and my staff is reaching out and saying, we've got everything but this, we've got everything but that. We want to make sure that they get it done. We're going to be communicating with you as a board in a timely manner. And our, our protocol calls for communicating with all board members, unless you choose to do some other format. But our, our protocol is we can communicate with all board members. Here's what we're doing, and here's what we've got going. I'm on page three and page nine, and this is what we really want to highlight. This is our screening of applicants. The very first thing we do is that we sit down and we read through all the information that has been submitted by all applicants, and we begin comparing them against what you said you're looking for. And we begin doing a sorting process to do this. You know, and I'm just giving you an example. Some, some of them are easy to take out. I was working on a search in another state, and a bus driver applied for the superintendent's job. Well, pretty easy to eliminate a bus driver because he didn't have qualifications. But we do seriously read through all of them, and we begin our sorting process, and we begin talking amongst ourselves as a team about, what do you see here? Who do you think is looking good? What should we be doing about that? And then we begin our vetting process. And I think we do this better than any other firm, and I attribute this to my consultants and their tenacity. We start calling references, and we start with the listed references. In the forty years I've been HR, I get to find a listed reference that doesn't like the person. We know that. We start with them, we ask them questions about the strengths and deficiencies. But we have two questions at the end that are critical. Second to the last question is, is there anything in this person's background that if it became public information, would be an embarrassment to this district? That's a question we learned along the way. We used to say, are there any skeletons, anything, you know, you want to share with me? We ask it that, or is there anything in the background that if it became public information, would be an embarrassment to this district? And most of the time, there's nothing. Occasionally, there's hesitation. And what we say is, we are professional consultants. This is confidential information. Would you, what would you like to share with me? And they usually do. Just because we hear from one person doesn't make it so. So our last question is, could you give me the name or two or three other individuals that can speak this person's ability? They do, we call them, we ask them the same list of questions. We're trying to verify any hesitations about the candidates. And then we ask them, would you give us a name or two or three other individuals that can speak this person's ability? We go a minimum of three removed from primary references. What we're looking for is consistency of answers. What are the strengths, what are the deficiencies? Is when we come to meet with you, we want to have all that information to share with you. Now, besides that, we do cold calls. We'll call the mayor of the town, we'll, we'll call individuals that we know there, we'll call other superintendents. And so we don't just rest on those list of references. We go as deep as we can because when we're presenting candidates to you, we want to make sure we can accurately represent them so you can make a choice of who you want to interview to do that. When we meet with you, with our applicants, we will create what we call our shortlist. But you're going to receive a list of everybody that applied for your position. We don't take anybody's name off the list. Your candidates are not ours. But we will have a detailed report on most people that we think are most closely meeting what you said you're looking for and what your community said they're looking for to do that. Based on that shortlist, we're going to also send out to those individuals a link to a videotape where they're going to be videotaping themselves, answering three questions, about nine minutes of videotape, that we're going to share with you, give you an opportunity to see the people and hear them and listen to the responses to do that. And we find that that's a dynamic piece of this process because you're going to be at this meeting saying, these are the four, five, maybe six that we want to meet and interview and talk to. And so we want to give you as much information as possible to do that. We're also going to be working with you to help you develop interview questions around your criteria and making sure that you've got some open-ended questions to do that. So that's the vetting process, which I think we do better than anybody else. Again, I already talked about reviewing candidates with you in phase four. We don't take anybody's name off the list. We're going to work with you on the interview procedures and the schedule. We do recommend that the, the groups that we meet with have an opportunity to meet candidates, whether that be a Zoom or in person to do that. So the, the groups that you pointed out to us, when we first come in, we want to meet with everybody, as many as we can, and that's why we do the things online. But when it comes down to meeting candidates, we want to limit that group to about eight to ten and have an opportunity to meet the candidate, ask him questions. We coach them through this. Let me use an example. So eight to ten teachers in your district that are representative of your teachers will have an opportunity to meet the candidate, ask them questions, and also time for the candidate to ask questions of them. We do the same thing with students, with the principals, with the classified staff, with your community groups. And here's the input piece, is after they have met with the candidate, they have a form to fill out. And it says, John Doe, Jane Doe. Here's what we liked about him. Here's any questions we had about him. We're going to ask that to put it into an envelope and turn it into your contact person. And after you have interviewed all the people, after you have had your meaningful discussion, your, them are going to open those and read that input sections. Now, this is one way that we know that people know they've been heard and that they have meaningful input into your decision to do that. And I was sitting with the board a few years ago, where they interviewed four, they'd locked down two. I was in the debate as they were talking about the candidates. And I said, now let's open and read the input forms. And all the groups have one person above the other one. And so meaningful input, but keeping you in control, keeping you as a board and control that decision. People, when we, when people know they've been meaning to listen to you, they support your decision. And we've got a way to do that, and there are thirty years of doing that. So we take care of meeting with those groups and taking them and coaching them through how to meet the candidates. Also, this is typically a two-person decision. Most of our candidates have a spouse. And so when we come to the interview, we will help set up a spouse tour. In a typical interview day, your candidate is going to come into your district, probably get a driving tour quickly around, and maybe a walk through a, a school or two. And it's going to be dependent on pandemic, obviously, to do that. But in the normal time, we do that. But then, when the candidate comes in to meet with those various groups, we have a, a tour for the spouse, get around your community and see the things that are important to them. Housing, places of worship, shopping, things like that. Because when this is done, what we want to have happen, because this is a two-person, it's a way to decision-making process. We want them to be able to get in their car ready to go home and say, wow, what a great district. We met some wonderful people. I hope they offer us the district, or excuse me, the position. Because we don't want to lose somebody at the end to do that, so we take care of that. We take care of working with you and your district and making arrangements for the candidates to come in. We, we will reach out to the candidates once you've selected who they are and confirm their interview dates and their schedule. Everybody that applied will receive a letter from us, from you, through us, saying, thank you for applying for the position. Unfortunately, you were not selected for an interview. All those that were interviewed, they will receive a personal phone call. I mean, I did not get offered the job, and they'll be, they'll receive a phone call from one of the consultants saying, thank you for taking the time for applying. We think you're a great candidate, would like to see you in other searches, because that's usually the case. But we do have the personal contact with them. Once you make your decision of who you're going to offer, included in our fee, we do a background check, and that background check is a criminal, financial, and academic verification background check to do that. So that's included in our fee. And then finally, after getting down to the end, we have a commitment to come back and work with you and the board and the new superintendent for one year. And we take you through a process where you're going to establish performance objectives for your new superintendent, the two to three things that you want them to focus on the first year. And, and then we're going to turn to you as a board. We have the superintendent participate in that. We're going to turn to you as a board and say, so what evidence will you accept that this person's making progress towards those? What we're doing is clarifying expectations. That first-year transition can be a rough one. And when we come in and work with you and the board, we're able to help you through that, making sure you got good communications, and we're available to you for that year. With that, we provide a two-year guarantee. If the person can't continue for any reason in two years, we'll come back and do the search for fees only. As I told you, our fee is eleven thousand five hundred dollars. And the proposal, we're going to put in fees with in-person meetings and so that you can see what the fees are, and those are not to exceed bounds. And when we submit our expenses, we send actual expenses with, with the receipts. Even though I teach pretty much online, I still lecture, but I don't lecture this much in my classes. Let me stop and respond to any questions that you have.
This is Lyle. I just want to clarify, Tom said that in the guarantee that we would do it only for the fees. I, I think that that was really the expenses. The fee itself is not repeated, just the actual expenses.
Thanks, Lyle, for clarifying that. I should have said expenses only, which is basically advertising.
This is Catherine.
Yes.
Can you tell me who would be the lead if we were to engage your firm?
You're breaking up a little bit.
Who would be the lead for our team if we were to hire your firm?
This would be the lead, or this would be the team, the four of us. And either Dr. Sunblad, or Los Horse, or Kim, or I would be the lead, depending on who you choose.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Judy Downs. I'm a school board member. I apologize, I wasn't able to join at the beginning of this meeting. I had a work commitment. So I apologize if this was covered earlier, and I did read the section in your proposal. But could you just speak briefly about diversity in hires? I think challenging this team to look very strongly and encouraging that we consider a diverse candidate, both maybe a person of color or a woman, is very important, I think, to me and some fellow board members. So if you could just speak a little bit to how you would help to ensure that we are looking at the most diverse field possible?
Yeah, in, in the proposal, we've got a list of diversity placements. I was just looking for that, but I can't find it. But twenty-three percent, twenty-five percent of our consultant base are diverse individuals. They're members of the National Black Caucus and the American Latino Association. And so we do work through them, and we do advertise with them. And we are very cognizant of trying to recruit diverse individuals. But about, again, about twenty-five, twenty-five percent of our consultants, and I think probably about thirty percent, it's in, it's in the proposal someplace, of our placements are females or minorities. So being a national firm, that's a big issue for us, is the ability to do that.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
What percentage, and this is, I'm, I'm just curious, and I'm using this as an opportunity to put you on the spot. Well, what percentage of superintendents are women?
Oh, man, I, I don't know. Less than fifty, I know that. But I, if you, let me find this placement page, and you can take a look at it. Because we listed the female placements too. Does anybody, has anybody found in my consultants the diversity page?
Page twenty-one.
Page twenty-one. If you'll take a look at that, it'll show our diversity placement, and it's females and minorities in there. And we have a high number of placements for them. But the number of female superintendents continues to rise. I know you didn't hear my introduction, but I teach at the University of Nebraska, and we're seeing more and more females getting into the, the superintendency. In fact, I would say in my classes right now, there's more than fifty percent of my students that are female that are prepared to become administrators, both high school or both principals and administrators. So we're seeing a rise of them, and we're very much a proponent of that. Other questions?
I just did a quick search on my phone, and it, it looks like, according to Siri, twenty-four percent of the superintendents in the country are women.
Thank you.
And Lyle, is that for Iowa?
That's for the nation.
For the nation. Yeah, I'm going to say, I'm going to say the Midwest is higher than that.
I, I know that I saw some numbers a few years ago that that number in Iowa was definitely increasing, but I can't recall the numbers.
Yeah. Other questions? So I have a question of you, when will you be making the decision?
Well, it could be at the end of tonight. Otherwise, we have another board meeting because of our return-to-learn dilemmas on Wednesday. So it'll probably be by Thursday.
You are at a, a good spot, being out ahead of the, of the search season. But I would like just to add, if, if you select us, we would like to get this started as soon as possible. Because the more we can advertise, the more we can reach out, the better pool we're going to be in.
And I would conjecture that that's kind of where we are too. So.
Good.
I want to thank all of you for your time. It's nice to see Dr. Sunblad again. So thank you so much, each of you.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate the opportunity to reach out to you electronically. This is the new normal for us.
Yeah.
It's tough. I would rather be there in front of you.
Catherine, this is Lyle. Are you related to Galen Hauser?
Yes, I am. He's right here with me.
Yikes.
Hi, Galen. How are you?
Nalen, what are you doing?
Did you do any of the virtual RAG-bri this last week?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm fortunate enough to also know one of your principals, or have worked with, Jeremy Braden, my last superintendent position. He was one of my principals and I think highly of Jeremy and hope that he's doing a great job there, would anticipate that he is.
He is. He absolutely is. It is a very small state.
Yes, it is.
So I appreciate you trying, folks. And we'll be getting in touch.
Please do.
Thank you very much. I hope we get the opportunity to meet you again.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Downs, are you still there?
Yeah.
Give your father-in-law a little trouble, will you?
I do all the time.
You do, because he deserves it.
I'll keep it up.
Yeah.
Is everybody in Iowa related to everybody else?
Yes.
Pretty much. Yep.
It doesn't take long to make a connection with most.
Urbandale specifically is a nice little microcosm of the educational community.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great.
Urbandale is one of the smaller geographic districts in the state, as I recall, like six or eight square miles.
We're the smallest, actually, by our geographic footprint.
But we have twenty percent open enrollment, so that's how we're able to compete with our fellow metro districts.
So you're taking people away from Johnston?
Yes.
They've never mentioned that to me.
And you have a lot of diversity in your district, don't you? Yes, we do.
We do have a lot of diversity specifically amongst growing refugee communities. Our community since the, for the past twenty years, starting with the Bosnian community, has been a refuge for those immigrant communities, and that tradition has been kept up. So we're very grateful and are, are, we're, I think, a very good representation of Polk County and kind of the greater metro area and that.
And a beautiful, brand-new weight room I saw for your athletes and students. I think I saw that. And also, you're going to the state baseball tournament this week?
Wednesday. Getting ready for a three-peat.
All right. All right.
So again, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you and thank you for allowing us to come virtual.
Yep, bye-bye.
Good evening.
Okay, so representatives from Ray and Associates are in the waiting room, so I will admit them now.
I apologize to my fellow board members for being late. Thank you for your understanding.
Okay, before we start with this one, I need to tell you that I do know Dr. Christie, because I worked with his daughter. I mean, seriously, we all know each other, with student council 30 years ago, okay? And Galen has worked with Ray and Associates. We'll try not to walk down memory lane.
Oh, we actually need Kim to leave the call. Kim, with the other firm, is still on the call. So we would, Kim, can you please exit the Zoom? Deanna, is there any way to get Kim off the Zoom?
Yep, just one second.
Okay, thanks, Deanna.
Here.
Catherine, who was that gentleman? His name wasn't spelled out in his?
That's Dr. Sunblad from Johnson.
Okay.
So I am continuing to try to remove that person. I think if you're comfortable going forward, I will just kind of continue that on my end.
Sure. So you can go ahead and let Dr. Christie in, whomever.
Actually, I am here.
Awesome, hi.
Hi, everybody, I'm Molly Sportsaw with Ray and Associates.
Thank you for accommodating our earlier-than-normal request.
Oh.
We're more than happy. You know how it is, like early bedtime, so you ran right into my hands.
You guys actually saved me from putting my toddler to bed, it fell on the husband, thank you.
I didn't have to put either of the kids to bed tonight, it's great.
Just let me know when we're ready to roll.
Surely. I'm Catherine Hauser, I'm the board president. I'm going to mute myself and take myself off of video. I know you from a past life.
Absolutely.
So we will just go ahead and have you visit with us about your process when you're ready.
Well, Molly, are we ready?
I think we're as ready as we're going to be.
Absolutely. So, first of all, greetings from Ray and Associates. And of course, as you can see, my name's Dick Christie and you've been introduced to Molly Sportsaw as well. So we're pleased to have the opportunity to present to you. And regarding superintendent search, most certainly, a superintendent search is among the most important decisions that a board will make. You should have received ahead of time a copy of our proposal, a presentation PowerPoint, and why hire Ray and Associates? And of course, I'll spend most of my time with the presentation PowerPoint, which we refer to as a flip chart. Also, my understanding is that we have 30 minutes and we'll invite questions at any point. I would rather clarify any issues or any questions that might raise rather than waiting until the end, to do them as we move along. So I would ask ahead of time, are there any prepared questions or this is just a give and take? Wonderful. So, again, very quickly, a quick introduction. I'm, of course, Dick Christie. I've been with Ray and Associates for 40 years. I've done 130, 45 years, I guess I've been around, or I'm often fond of saying, I've been around the firm that I recall when it was Gary Ray and Associates, singular me. So with that, I spent, just to mention, 20 years of superintendent schools in Council Bluff. I spent the last 12 years directing the Superintendent Preparation Program at the University of Nebraska Omaha. Molly, you want to very quickly add any information about yourself?
Sure, I haven't been with the firm nearly as long as Dr. Christie. But I've been with the firm for a number of years. I'm actually the vice president of the firm. I work in the corporate office here in Cedar Rapids. I just take a special interest in the Iowa searches. I'm born and raised here in Iowa, so I take a little vested interest in who are superstars and who are leaders of our kids. I've been with the firm for numerous searches throughout Iowa, most with Dr. Christie helping me out. The firm has been in business, as Dick said, for about over 45 years. We're the longest firm and we've also got the best national standard, or national standing. So we will be doing a national search for you, where we won't be limiting you to the best within the region. It will be the best within the country. And like I said, I take a personal vested interest in Iowa, I'm very proud of that fact. Our corporate office is located in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, as I mentioned before. We're the largest network in the country. We have over 160 associates with 85 alone in the Midwest. We're very, very proud of that. Full-time office staff, including myself. We have one of the largest databases, again, on a national level. And again, associate networking is what is the bread and butter of how we do it. We have 160 associates that, once we get the job, we reach out to everybody and say, hey, we have the Urbandale Community School District. This is what they're looking for. This is kind of their profile, this is what we're doing. And we send it out there, because the best candidates aren't necessarily looking for a job. It's word of mouth and people that are ready to take that next step are ready to take that, they're ready to do it and it's all networking. And that's what we utilize to really recruit. Dick, did I miss anything?
Nope, I'm just trying to get it up here, I'm trying to get the flip chart up.
Wonderful.
A minute, there we go. Can everybody see that? Everybody's up, good. So I think Molly just talked about the firm and as you can see, we hit it right there. There we go. So, to begin the discussion of the process, I would say what we start with is building what we call the profile. And as you can see, there are various components of the profile. The first of which is that we work with individual board members. There's a one time at the beginning of the search where we discuss one-on-one with each individual board member what they're looking for, tell us about the district, tell us about the issues. The only time we talk to individual board members, but we want to be sure we get each individual board member's perspective. But we also ask the board to identify what are some groups that you want us to work with. Traditionally, those groups involve parents, they involve community, support staff, teachers, administrators, students. Sometimes we mix and match some of them, sometimes we deal with them as separate groups. What we do when we develop the profile is, and of course, during a period of COVID-19, we're flexible and we can certainly pivot in order to meet the current circumstances. And what we generally do is we want to meet with representatives or just general meetings with members of those groups. We have something we call the 30th Quality Survey. This survey, we've been able to collect over time, what are the qualities and qualifications most usually presented or considered by boards when it comes to selecting a superintendent? And we try to boil that down to eight or 10. Those eight or 10 then allow us to figure out who to recruit, how to recruit, and where to recruit. So we're going to be sure and we highly recommend that we involve stakeholders in the process. Even during the period of COVID-19, we can do that very well. We've had some excellent experiences in terms of doing that over the last four to five months, not only in Iowa, but throughout the country as well. So with that, what I would say is, as you can see, one of the things that we'll work very early in the process will develop a timeline. In the proposal, the 14, 15-page proposal that we provided, on page five, we listed eight, excuse me, we listed an example timeline. Now, that timeline is just an example. I think the one we showed started in August and ended right around Thanksgiving. With the current start of the school year being a bit uncertain, how to react to COVID-19, how to open, what kind of school year to plan, certainly, that planning is inflexed in most districts and certainly, when it comes to conducting a superintendent search, we're likewise, we're able to pivot and react as well. In terms of promotional materials, the recruitment materials, Molly, you want to comment on that element, please?
Yeah, so if you have somebody within your district that does the graphics and is big on the promotional materials, you are more than welcome to utilize somebody if you're familiar with. If not, we'd like to take that off of your shoulders and we'll actually develop the recruitment brochure in-house. You guys would have full control over wordsmithing and changing any idea. We'll make it perfect for you, as basically I'm saying, we'll customize it for you. But we would take that off your shoulders, develop the recruitment brochure that would be mailed, emailed out to all of our candidates as well as brought to any conventions that may fall throughout that recruitment period. We also customize the advertisement that would be placed on your behalf, as well as the advertisement on our website. And I can't stress enough, our website is probably the best form of advertising that we have. We get multiple, I mean, hundreds of hits per day. We can tell you how many are on your site alone to check out your job. And we would customize that to really highlight Urbandale and what you all have to offer.
And what I would add to that, one of the reasons why that's important, because we've been able to secure more applications than many of our competitors because of the reach of our advertising, well, because of the reach of our promotional materials and because of our network of associates throughout the country. And in terms of, when it comes to aggressively recruiting, in fact, this is probably an appropriate time that I would comment. In fact, back in 2015, while Urbandale was conducting their superintendent search for your current superintendent, the district was handling it themselves and the board was directing that particular search. In fact, they contacted us and asked us if we could assist, particularly in the recruitment process, because I think during the recruitment process of board, I should say the district undertaken, there was a very small number of applicants. I would have guessed maybe eight, 10, 12, something along that line, including internal applicants. And they asked us to help with elements, chief among them was recruiting. And when it comes to recruiting, it is probably an excellent example, I'd use an Urbandale example, that we took the material at hand, but developed. Our recruiting tactics are sharper when we can work on profile with the board, understand the details of the board. Then in that particular case, we were able to take what the board had already done. And one of the first things we do in the recruiting process is we automatically make a list of 2025. And I recall, I looked, we had, I sat down with Linda, the associate I worked with, and we listed 25 people we wanted to actively recruit. And when we set out to do that, and within a very short period of time, I'm guessing 10 days, something along that line, we're able to secure, as I recall, another 2025 applications. So the board had some choices in terms of making. But I would also see, if you're keeping the line with three items, you can see board updates. And I'll come back to what I talked to earlier. We're very conscious and cautious about the fact that we need to stay in contact with the board. What we do is we ask the board to designate an in-house contact person, somebody on the staff that we can work with on a daily basis. And then, of course, that the board have a contact person as well. Generally, that's the board president. Normally, what I'll do, and every seven to 10 days, I'll provide an update to the board president, email to the board president saying, here's the status of the search. Here's how many recruitment calls we made, here's how many applications have been filed, here's how many partial applications that we see that we're working with, here's the efforts that we've undertaken and why we've undertaken them. And so as a result, the board can constantly see how that search is unfolding. So, and I would say, very typically, when we recruit, and I use some examples, I think, to be meaningful to you. I mean, we did Sedell two years ago. We started around the first of June and our timeline was June 1st until the first week of July. And the board was skeptical that we could find candidates with that kind of, that late in the year. As it turned out, we had 45 applications, we checked out 18 of them. We presented 10 applicants to the board, the board cut that to five, which they interviewed, first-round interviews, followed that up with three, two or three, that they invited in for second-round interviews and selected superintendent. And of course, Todd Martin's been there. We did the same thing with Norwalk during a normal time, had a large number of applications in that particular case. I know Dwayne McGee's been there four years, starting on five, Indianola, Art Sadoff. College Community, Doug Wheeler came from Sedell, went to College Community. Now, those are searches, I personally was the lead in and that's why I mentioned them. But at the same time, in each one of those cases, we had an excellent base of applicants, quality applicants, the board was very happy with it. We had choices and in some cases, the choices were very difficult when it came to narrowing down who to select. So, and you can see where we talk about aggressive recruitment and I think we've addressed that issue. Molly, is there anything else we need to add to that particular point before we move on?
Yeah, I just want to make sure too, there's some firms that will have a stable of candidates that they just kind of roll through the punches with each search. I want to make sure that you guys know we don't do that. We have over 3,000 people in our database right now. We do not send out the invitation to apply for Urbandale to all 3,000. Everybody, when they sign on, they create this profile of what their dream job is, basically, region, state, enrollment size, salary, of course, all those fun factors, and we narrow it down. So who we're inviting are people that are interested in your position, are interested in Urbandale and will be a good fit. We don't want to waste anybody's time. So when we say we're aggressively recruiting, we're not just taking any candidate who might be interested. We're really narrowing it down to who would be a good fit for you, because you are our clients.
And what I would add to that, when it comes to screening of candidates, when we present candidates to you, and I use the example, I use against Sedell, we had 45, we narrowed it to 18, went to 15, went to 10. When we present candidates, we first present the 10 that are eight or 10 or 12 that we recommend the board look at first. But we also make available to the board the entire candidate pool, so they can ask questions about other candidates, why they were included or not included, or why we happen to screen to those particular individuals. But we'll be sure that they're vetted before we present them, not after, so that we know we have candidates that will play well in terms of the media, the community, when they start doing their unofficial background checks that we've already done in depth. We also conduct, when it comes to finalists, when it gets down to three or two finalists, we also conduct in-depth background investigations. Molly, can you be, I think you have more experience in that arena, can you talk a little bit more about that?
So we use a company actually located in Iowa, it's called C4 Operations. And what they do is they will do a criminal and education verification, a civil, they're going to do the full enchilada, is what I call it. They're going to know everything about the candidate and you will have their entire background. And then, and that's for whoever, for the top two, top three. And that is covered within the base fee, we don't charge any additional for that. And it just really helps kind of ease everybody's mind, because it's a big hire. I mean, this is the biggest hire as a board you're going to make. You're going to know everything about that candidate, you're going to know their work history, you're going to have education verification, you're going to know civil, you're going to know criminal. You're going to have all of that at your fingertips, which is also helpful when you do hire the candidate and they become your superintendent, it goes in their HR file and it's a done, you know everything on them already. And again, that's at no additional fee, that's included in the base fee.
And I would add to that, you know, I'm sure as a district, you have your own background investigation requirement or, and, you know, this would be in addition to it. So we're certainly would have vetted the superintendent candidates by then, there'd be no surprises whatsoever. One of the things that we piloted was something called the use of video with candidate presentations. What we do, when it gets down to 10 or 12, when we're doing that narrative of candidates, we'll ask them to respond to three questions. And usually for about a minute and a half, two minutes, those three questions in the board can view. And usually for about a minute and a half, two minutes, those three questions in the board can view. So, you know, how's it say that sometimes a picture of video is worth a thousand pieces of paper or resumes, whatever the case might be. We were the first to use that particular approach. Many of our competitors have now utilized that as well. But we find it very successful. I think we've honed it down to where it's been very useful, not time consuming. And when we're presenting candidates, we're able to show you the videos as well, even during a time of COVID-19 and not being able to meet face to face, that's even more powerful, I think, as we present. Any questions on this page before I move on to the next one, before I move on to the next shot? Drive on. So, I talked about this particular component already, and that's the presentation of candidates. And again, what I would tell you that we're going to take the field of 45, 50, 40, 55, whatever it happens to be. And we're going to narrow that down to eight, 10, 12 that we ask you to look at first. And when we present those candidates, whether we're able to do it face to face, I think we return to normal in terms of our timeline, which I very doubt is going to happen. We've learned how to do that using video and online meetings with boards. And we've had plenty of practice since January throughout the country, and we've learned from each other. A number of our associates have coached each other in terms of how to do that very well. I think one of the things that, and you can see with the board's provided candidate video interviews, and I've talked about that, but I want to reiterate it. One of the other things we, that's been very successful for us is we use board consensus building instruments for candidates and something we call a matrix. What with the matrix is a systematic approach to comparing each candidate to every other candidate. Each board member does that individually. We have a scoring sheet that we're able to use with that. We're able to present it, and we ask the board members to do it individually, to submit it to me. If it's face to face, I'm able to collate it right there. Otherwise, we generally set it up where the, each board member would call me or email me their results of the matrix. And then the matrix is a forced choice activity. It's the best way I can describe it. It's a systematic way of comparing each candidate against each other candidate, and to be able to derive scores from it, where you can see distance and which board members support which candidates at which particular time, but also has a numerical value to it as well. So that everyone can see, can use the scoring information in order, in order to assist with decision-making. When it, when it comes to candidate, and before I move on, anything, Molly, you want to talk about when it comes to the matrix or that part of the process?
It sounds kind of scary when a consultant tells you that it's a forced scoring, scoring matrix. It's forced in the matter of, as Dr. Christie mentioned, that it just ranks everybody. It's anonymous for the board, but it ranks all of our candidates in numerical order. So it just makes it very black and white, takes a lot of emotion out of it, and it's a good conversation starter. In no way is it the firm saying, okay, here's your top three. This is who's moving forward. It's us just saying, okay, based off of recommend, and based off of your scoring, this is where we're at. Let's start the conversation. We're very proud of the fact that this is your search and we will customize it and we will work with you because you're our client. And this is how we keep doing business. And this is, it's word of mouth. It's all reputation. We want to make sure you're happy with us at the end of it.
And as you can see on the, on the line with three boxes, where it talks about finalized interview questions and the process, we'll work with you in terms of, and what we generally recommend is a two-part interview process. First round interviews, usually five or six candidates, you know, when you go from 45 to 18 to 12, or the five or six, we call that first round interviews. And, and, and the first round interviews, it can be done face to face, it can be done online, it can be done using Zoom. And it works very well in that regard. And then what we do is once you've, if you're interviewing five or six, and then it would determine which two or three do you want to bring back? That's when we generally involve a spouse. That's when we generally focus on the specifics of that particular candidate. Start meeting with the groups, interviewing with groups. First round interviews are generally with the board only. After all, the first match has to be with the board. And, and then if the match works with the board, then we need to bring the community, the students, the staff, the support staff, the parents into that. And we have a systematic way of ensuring that that's going to occur. We use the consensus candidates, and, and, and in the end, we come up with a final candidate. And I might add, along the way, we're working with that candidate. If someone agrees to, to a first round interview, a semifinalist, then we're constantly checking with them, are you serious about this? Are you interested in this job? What is there about this job we can provide to you? We don't want people at this particular point that aren't sure, or having to begin to work with their family in terms of is this a place that we want to move to, not just as a candidate, but as a superintendent, but as a family, to be a better part of that particular community. So we're going to work intricately with the candidates all along this process to ensure that they're going to be committed to accepting the position once it gets down to the final interview, if they're invited back for final interview. We'll also work with you to establish salary range, work with candidates in terms of what expectations might be. We'll provide you comparative data in terms of what are similar positions playing and paying in the metro area throughout Iowa, throughout the nation, throughout the Midwest. Whatever data you, that you may need in order to assist you in making that determination. So we will also take care of notifying the candidate as well. And we will, and I think we need to go back to one thing. With Ray and Associates, you know, with Molly directing the office and, and, and there are two other people that work in that office in addition to Ryan Ray, who's the president of the firm. And I might add that Ryan was able to join us. It so happened, he was fortunate to have, he had a third child here just a few days ago, and we wisely gave him the night off on that particular component. I think that's probably the wise thing to do.
We support giving paternal leave, so I think that that's a great move.
Yeah, for sure. Right on. We're values in that regard. It's a reflection of our values.
And he, especially, he's like,
I don't like the way it looks.
And sympathize. He's got two, two-year-old girls and now a newborn little girl. So that poor guy.
By this time, he might have wanted to been on with us. So any questions on this particular page? I might add, when we worked with Urbendale the last time, when the board invited us in to recruit, they asked our advice in terms of how to proceed with interviews. We gave them the information. They took the search from there, and I think it's an example of how we're able to pivot, how we're able to customize a search to fit the particular wishes of a board and district. Now, certainly what we believe is the best approach is when you use the whole, the full process with us engaging all steps along the way, because it assists with recruiting, it accepts with the connecting, us understanding the district, you understanding the candidates, and assist with that particular components, and add our professional expertise to that. So I'll move on to the next page.
It's on it. It's on it. It's there.
What is? There we go. There we go. I'll only spend a moment on this particular page, then we will certainly work with you to finalize the search to make sure that the candidate that you desire to be superintendent and their family, and, and significant other, whatever it happens to be, are in a position to accept that position. Now here it talks about a visit. Generally, what we recommend at this particular stage of the game, if the board wants to engage some in that, that we recommend that, for example, that we, that we arrange for the board president, for your board president, in this case, it'd be Catherine, the toxic board president of that particular candidate's, or whatever the finalists happen to be, to make that connection. We can involve other board members along that way, that way as well, just to ensure that you make some contact. If that's something you desire. And we'll assist, of course, with the contract development as well. That's a part of our, that's a part of our base as well. So, let's talk about two components here. First, we'll talk about facilitating the superintendent transition. But before I ask Molly to do that, what I would say to you is we really do it in two parts. One part is sort of the preliminary piece is something we call an entry plan. Sometimes it's called a transition plan. Sometimes it's called a listening tour, where we work out who, who and what are the new superintendent going to engage with during the first 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, semester, whatever length of time, that the person develops that entry plan, that transition plan, that listening tour, and works with the board in terms of what they're going to do and why they're doing it, and ensure that with the community as well. In fact, I would advocate that be posted on the district website, and so anybody can see how is our new superintendent engaging with the community? Who are they talking to in terms of groups? What approach are they taking in the end? Before they start determining their own approach, they'll have to be full aware of the district and all the views of the important people in that particular process. I think that's an important component. But here's something else we offer in addition to that. And if you would, Molly, talk about the facilitating the transition period?
So we offer what we call board self-assessment survey, and this is continuous. It's not just the first year after you hire the superintendent. This is every year, as long as he or she is employed by Urbendale. What it is, is it's a survey. We have the superintendent participate, and we also have the board participate. We then go ahead and compile. It kind of ranks areas that are super solid, some areas that may need some work, and some areas that may need a workshop or more of a focus session to kind of help bring that all together. We would go ahead and we would score it, put it together, prepare the materials. And then we would send it to the board and the superintendent. Probably more of the board chair would get it first. And then you can determine if you want us to in and have a face-to-face board workshop, or if you would like us to come in over Zoom and conduct a meeting, or if you want to take the information yourselves and say, okay, we can work on this. We know what to do. We kind of give you a handbook of, here's some areas that are great, here's some areas that need some work, here's some areas that need a little help, and here's how we can do it. And we offer that, no additional cost, throughout the entire tenure of your superintendent. And that kind of helps, that kind of ties in with, you know, we have a two-year guarantee. We, we stand behind who we place for two years. If it doesn't work out, we will come back at no additional cost and redo the search. This helps keep that going. It helps maintain that relationship between the board and superintendent, which is the foundation of a great relationship. I hit it, Dick?
Anything I can add on this particular page, Molly?
All right. I think we're good.
All right. So are there any questions, any clarifications, anything I need to, we need to go into more depth, Molly and I?
Just add, or ask, and it's kind of an overall question. I saw in the highlights page, you mentioned hiring more women and people of color, and that's a very big priority for me. So can you tell me a little bit about your experience hiring women and diverse candidates into positions, or facilitating the hiring of? And what kind of techniques you have to ensure that when we see the final candidates, they are the most diverse selection possible?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question because I got two great examples. Two of the most recent searches I did were, on one hand, was West Side in the Omaha area. West Side is a high-flying suburb surrounded by the city of Omaha. Some of you will be familiar with it. So the approach we took there was completely different than, I just finished up in the Kansas City area Hickman Mills. Student body of Hickman Mills is 91% of color. We, I can't, I'd say I haven't recruited as hard as I did for that particular search. We, we had 54 candidates, 30, and what they said, it's a district of about 5,000, and they wanted an experienced superintendent. And they said, we have to have ample of color candidates. We're not limiting ourselves. We want a cross-section. Of the 54 candidates, 35 were of color. 18 were women with administrative experience, often as superintendent. Now, I would, I would have only, I had been satisfied if at least half the field would have been women with experience. But we weren't able to quite reach that particular point, but it wasn't because of our lack of trying. And so as a result, I, I, I think that describes it as much as anything. Now, when we did West Side, just the opposite. I mean, we were attracting completely, and they, of course, wanted women. They wanted candidates of color. We were to deliver to them as well, that kind of a, of a field of candidates. I hope that Hickman Mills example provides an example, and that answered your question directly, but I can go deeper if you wish.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
The only thing I would add, as well, we have great relationships with the various, in terms of national organizations that represent the administrators of color, for example. Likewise, we work with women's groups as well. I mean, when we got, in most districts, usually 70% of the workforce or more is female. The experience opportunities that have been given in the last decade and a half have not quite matched that yet. It isn't because we weren't trying to move that along. I guarantee you of that. Any other questions or clarifications that we can add?
Yeah, how would you engage, can you elaborate on how you would engage stakeholders in the process?
Yeah, I would answer, answer it two different ways. Usually what we will do is we sit down with the board and we work out the timeline, and we'll say, okay, do you want to hold some forums that we invite, that we specifically invite community? Or do you want to designate, example, you know, some sample stakeholders groups? You each want to designate a group of stakeholders that we meet with first? When it comes to using the instrument we call the 33 qualities survey, we sit down with you as a board and we say, okay, what targets do we want to hit? How many parents do we want to respond? How many students do we want to respond? How many community individuals want to respond? How many support staff do we want to respond? I know, for example, when I did Wayne, of course, in a smaller district in Southern Iowa, of course, we, they said we want to hit 100%. Well, we just about hit 100% of all those groups. Now, parents, I think we got to 60 or 70, support staff 90. We had all the students, we had all the, we had all the administrators, we had all the teachers responding. And a little larger, and so what I would say is, I'd be saying to you, let's set a target of 12, 1500. Let's, let's break that down. How many, how many of that do we want parents responding to? How many parent responses do we want? You know, you're fortunate to have someone who heads up your communications that I know is quite skilled. We would work with that individual to say, how are we going to reach those particular groups? How are we going to ensure that those surveys are going to be returned? The other thing we would do is also meet face to face with, with groups. You know, open cattle call kind of a meeting, if that's still possible in the COVID-19 era. We do it electronically, we do it using Zoom. Molly, we've done it any, any one of 100 ways. The whole idea is that we want to engage with groups and people for them to feel a part of this process from the very beginning, but making clear that in the end, it's the board. There's only seven of you who have a vote. I don't have a vote, nor the most important person in the community, you have a vote. But we have to have a mechanism for those individuals to indicate to you what their thoughts are, reflections are. We also want representatives of those groups participating in the actual final interview, when it gets down to two or three people to interview. We want to be sure that their voices are, are heard as well. And we have something we call an impressions forum. And how we provide feedback back to the board from those representative groups is we ask that they complete an impressions forum. And then we don't summarize it. We simply provide copies of those impressions forms to you as board members, where you can read exactly what individuals wrote. They can, it can be anonymous, but their feedback is direct. And before determining who is it, we want to offer a position too, that you've read each one of those impressions forms from every individual that participated in the process, whether it be online or whether it be face to face.
And I also want to add to that too, Dick. Carmen, our availability is something that I'm really proud of. On the weekends, the work, the work number that goes directly to the office is routed to my cell phone, which is on our website. It's also on all of our documents, the server. It's also on all of our documents, the surveys that Dick's talking about, all of our materials. It has the phone number. It also has my email. I respond over the weekend. It's on the front page of our website. If there's any questions or concerns, reach out to this email address. I respond right away. And I welcome community input because I know sometimes people aren't so quick to share in a big public forum versus if they can pick up the phone and talk one-on-one and have a little bit more of a candid conversation. And we welcome that. And that's something that I'm really, really proud of, that as a smaller firm, we still offer that, but doing national searches. So we do the large-scale search, but we have that small-town feel that we are available.
Terrific. Thank you so much for that response. I really appreciate it.
Anything else we can respond to?
Well, this is Catherine. Would you two be our main consultants?
Absolutely.
You would.
The one thing we do not do is send the salesman in and then bait and switch.
Okay.
No way.
No, you're stuck.
It's us. Boy, and I would add, I just have to, you know, if we happen to be selected for this search, and this would be the third time I've worked with Mary Beth. I did so at Griswold in Atlantic, when they were doing superintendent searches. So she's sort of a good luck charm, I'd have to add to that.
We're very lucky to have her.
Mary Beth, thank you for all you've done along those lines. And if we ever will work with you and Deana again, I'm more than anxious. So any other questions? You, of course, got the information on, on costs. Anything we want, anything we clarify on that particular part for you? If not, within our presentation, there's a list of why hire Ray and Associates. We sent to a separate piece as well. This is the point in which it's always best to ask for the job. So that's what I'm doing, that we would look forward, we would welcome, we'd be excited about the opportunity to work with your, you know, with you as a board individually, with your community, with your staff, with your, with your school district. We would be excited about that opportunity. And, and my final question would be, is there a particular timeline you have for making a decision?
Yes, it will be, we, we may or may not actually have a discussion after we leave you, that we have another board meeting because of our return to learn obligations on Wednesday. And in all likelihood, we would know by the end of that evening. I would let.
And I see where, of course, you have a school that has a year-round program. So you're getting the pilot for the state in terms of how can we open? And, and I know you'll do it well. I've, I've noted that the board's been very careful, that the administrators have been very careful, and I know you do it well and you do it right.
We hope so. It's not very fun.
No, it's not. And I would say to you, you know, in times like this, it's when I wish I was back in the business as an active superintendent. Now, most people would say just the opposite, a good time to get out. Nope. This is when I want to be engaged. So thank you for the opportunity. It's been a pleasure and I hope I see you all again.
Thank you also.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye.
Well, where was their pricing in that proposal?
It was at the back because it said it's $9,500 plus travel, which, and meals and lodging. That's what I had.
For me personally, I just want to state I'm not so much, you know, the pricing is all within, I think, a fair range of each other. And unless somebody were to have completely ostentatious pricing, which they don't, I'm actually not taking that as, as a, personally, I'm not factoring that in.
No, me neither. I just wasn't sure. I couldn't find it in that proposal and so.
I just wanted to throw it out there.
No, I agree.
I think personality is so important. And ultimately, the search, it's, it's very little compared to many of our bills.
I agree.
Well, I would really, I would really like to be able to go back through the material and back through our, what we kind of agreed to with Ronnie and through the notes and kind of think, in the big picture, not necessarily, I mean, unless somebody else feels differently. But think about, I think some of the key things that Judy brought up, we didn't get to ask about diverse candidates with Grunmeier's, but I do think that's a valid consideration. I also think we need to look at where they've done successful searches and, and as we discussed before, some appreciation for the uniqueness of the metro and what we, what we need. So I would invite you to think about that. I think the timelines are similar enough that we probably could be done by about Thanksgiving. So that may or may not be a consideration.
Can I ask a few questions? I apologize if you went through this earlier. So Ray and Associates, we worked on in our last superintendent hire, is that correct?
Kinda. It's my understanding, I don't know, this is ancient history and none of us were here. I mean, I was still teaching. So I think that board decided that they could do the search on their own. And then they got partway through and they realized that they were in over their heads.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. And so, but the only thing they used them for was recruitment. They didn't use them, I don't think, for anything except access to their database. And so the procedures, and again, I wasn't really part of that, but that's what I've been given to believe.
So I just as a comment, and I'll just, I just like to put my feelings out there. I don't know if there's any agreement. I really like the third one. I like that Ray and Associates had a VP that was a woman and that she was a very active part of the conversation. I feel like that really bodes well for what we're looking for. And I also really loved Grunmeier, the first firm we listened to. I loved their energy and the way they had what, I forget what they were referring to it, but it certainly seemed like an objective, metric-based slash personality type test. I really liked the energy that Grunmeier brought.
I think that if you guys aren't comfortable, oh, I apologize.
Sorry. I think they referred to that as the mixed interviews, which was something that was really, I think, innovative. You know, I think that when we're thinking about these firms as well, we want to, you know, who's using the technology? Who's being innovative with new types of this process? And I would, I think, agree with Stacy. I mean, I don't think that we necessarily have to narrow it down tonight, but those two firms, Ray and Associates and Grunmeier, would probably be two that I, either one I would be okay with.
This is Mark. I would agree with that. I was just going to add, if, if, I don't want to ask the board members who were able to join the whole time to wait just because of me, but I would really appreciate the opportunity to watch the first part of this meeting tonight. Because reading their proposal, I am very intrigued and really appreciate Grunmeier's proposal. So I would like to watch that and get some more information.
Judy, that's fair because I would like the opportunity to sleep on it, if you will. So I kind of feel the same way as I just need time to self-reflect before, I don't want to make a quick gut reaction decision. I truly would like to self-reflect.
Sarah?
I think Mark got cut off too, maybe.
Oh, yeah, he did, kinda.
That's okay. I don't mind.
I attended you that.
I agree with the, I agree with the first and the third firms so far, but we should make a decision Wednesday after we all have some time.
Okay, awesome. That's kind of where I was going. So.
I'm in agreement. Sorry, this is Sarah. I, I share Mark's thoughts actually, exactly.
So did I hit everybody?
Ashley?
Ashley?
I don't know if my mic's working enough.
It is. I can hear you.
Oh, hey, I fixed it at some point. It has been a long night of me just messing around with my digital. I liked one and three. I would like to sleep on it to figure out which, which, they offered different things. I want to know which way my guts telling me we should be going with it.
And I would, I would invite you all to do that and think seriously about, maybe, maybe think big about the ultimate goal of who we're trying to get and what our resources are and how we can, you know, meet with success. Because I think that, I mean, no matter what the energy or whatever, you know, first impressions, sometimes you sleep on it and you think, oh, well, maybe da-da-da, whatever. So that's what I invite us all to do. And so we will have that item at the end of the meeting on Wednesday. And that agenda did come out today. I'd really invite you. I'm sorry, there's not a lot of time. There's some kind of big decisions in there. So please do your best to kind of review that. And unless there's something else, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Mark, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, awesome. Thanks, guys. Big decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Deana.